Good to see Kristen doing one.
Do you want some line?
Yes, it did, thank you. Precise. It's an art show?
I bet it is, yeah. It looks like an appropriate. Why would they care? There's the school right down.
I know.
The school right down the block.
Yeah, of course. Can we approve the variance as the... No, the variance for the height.
Oh, well, yeah, I don't know that that's something we can do.
Is that the signup sheet, Bill?
Yeah.
Maybe we get started.
Because it's limited impact.
Oh, cool.
That's a good question. That's a really good question. Someone else.
Say, public comments on either of the events tonight, please feel free to pitch a name up here.
Do you want to pitch your pens?
I have to borrow a piece of paper. Usually do everything with a tablet, but sometimes I scribble. You know, there's millions of people.
All right, how are we doing? You guys ready over there?
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started here. We have a couple of things to get through tonight. Uh, we will go ahead and call the meeting in order. Roll call.
Filet?
Here.
Bomer?
Here.
Derbingson?
Here.
Colby?
Here.
Crevel?
Here.
Dockery?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Leighton?
Here.
Omquist?
Here.
Dunlevy?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
Voisant?
Here.
And Mr. Van Emwigan and Mr. Armstrong are not with us this evening.
All right. We have, uh, minutes to approve. Approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 2024 meeting?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to do those individually or can we do them at a group?
June 24th, I think.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. I just have one. I did see that on the original packet. Oh, that's because I'm here. Approval, do we need to, can we approve as one or do we need to go through each one?
I don't see any reason why we can't. Um, just might want to restate the dates.
Yeah, so I can, so we have minutes to approve for regular meeting of July 9th, 2024. Regular meeting of July 22nd, 2024, and regular, and the work session of July 22nd, 2024 to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes, uh, draft minutes from July 9th, 2024. The draft minutes from the regular meeting July 22nd, 2024, and the draft minutes of the work session July 22nd, 2024.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from two meetings and the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any unscheduled citizens to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, uh, so then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I guess as we do, we both, we have both alternates here this evening. We have two, uh, hearings, so I guess we could split. We need one to vote on each, correct?
You can make that call.
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm going to go on the first one and then Kenny can go on the second?
Sure.
All right. First up, 137 Cotopaxi Lane, multiple principal structures, limited impact review.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Hello, welcome everyone from the public. Um, I'm Kristen Hodges, associate planner here, and I'll be presenting both the projects this evening. Um, so the first project is 137 Cotopaxi Lane. Uh, this is in the West End subdivision. The lot in question contains 11,517 square feet. Um, it is within the R2 zone district, which is the medium density residential district. Just so we are all aware of kind of what's being proposed tonight. The applicant has requested a limited impact review approval for three dwelling units within two principal multiple structures, um, on this lot. Um, and the density requirement per dwelling unit for the lots, um, right now per code is 2,734 square feet per dwelling unit. Um, so legally, the lot is technically allowed to provide for four units and is providing three, proposing three units. Uh, we can skip this slide too. To the next one, thank you. Uh, the site is surrounded by other medium density land uses such as single family homes and duplexes. Um, some of these are constructed already and others are still in the conceptual design phase. Um, and this proposal will fit in pretty nicely with the scale and context of the existing neighborhood. Um, the applicant has indicated that detached and attached garages will be provided to fulfill the parking requirements. And private alley and right of way access will be utilized for parking access. Future development will require utilities to be stepped in for the additional principal structure, which is noted here on the utility plan. I know it's kind of hard to see for you guys, but, um, so that's pretty much it for now. Uh, based on the observations and the review standards and the findings outlined, staff recommends the commission to approve this project. Um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Kristen?
Has the applicant indicated where the curb cut is for the, uh, garage?
For, uh, would you mind going back to the site plan? Are you talking about for Unit C, which is noted here on plan? Not yet, no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at this time? Okay.
Um, I do believe the applicant has a small presentation to make too. Um, or I think they're supposed to be online, Catherine. Okay, great.
Okay, I think we're ready for him.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, hi there, everyone. Um, I am sharing my webcam. I don't know if you see me yet. Can you see me by chance?
How do I show people?
That's okay. Um, so, um, I'm Ronnie Pelucia with Palona Architects and Urbanists, and I have presented to you in the past. Um, we have a little slideshow presentation, as you know. Um, we really love your community, love doing work there, and, um, wanted to present in the 3D form what it is that we anticipate this request might look like. Um, and so we've got this short presentation, and Kristen, thank you for your really good summary of our project, which will make my presentation even shorter. So, the land area that is highlighted in red encompasses the entire center of the West End neighborhood block. The area that you're looking at for the limited impact review is the area that's highlighted in yellow. Um, we, since you've seen this project, it has gone through an administrative review that amended the plat. And, um, in that process, what we did was modify the lot configuration in the area that is red to have homes that all have garages that face alleys and front porches that face public right of way. And I can share more about that if you're interested. Um, you know where the site is on Slide 2, it's at the west side of your community. On Slide 3, um, you can see how these buildings might lay out in form, um, on the site. The proposal is for two separate principal structures. We intend to build a duplex and a single family home. We intend to build two-story homes at these locations. Um, and we, in the process of making the plat amendment change, have made what we think is better, more usable space that provides outdoor space um, for the residents in the form of backyards on the north side of the property and side yards on the south side of the alley. And you'll see this part, this area that's in yellow, um, allows for the duplex units to have backyards and for the, um, detached single family house to have side and rear yard. If you go to the next slide, um, this is what it might look like in the 3D. Um, the image on the right shows the land area that is part of this review in yellow. And you'll note that one of the buildings is completely rendered, and that is the duplex building. And that the rest of the buildings down the street in the center are also rendered as duplexes, and that the single family home is just amassing. The duplexes that are shown here actually accurately represent what the builder intends to construct. We are working on the building permits, but the overall quality and character that we're trying to demonstrate with this um, is that the scale and size of these homes is compatible with the context and meets the goals of the comp plan um, to provide a more traditional neighborhood design with, once again, homes that are close to sidewalks, where there's, um, all of the site planning measures that, um, help to, um, you know, promote community. And on the left, you'll see here that this particular lot also helps, um, with the the compatibility with context in that it, there's the gradation of density as homes move away from the county road towards Cotopaxi, ultimately to single family homes. So the compactness of lots and homes, um, loosens up as you move further back into the neighborhood. And if you move to the next slide, um, this is the plat that's associated with it. And the next slide, um, shows what the buildings might look like at the streetscape. The single family home is just a massing model, but to go to one of the planning commissioner, uh, questions. The image in the lower right shows one option for access to the single family home. Um, it is, we've had conversations with planning staff. Um, we imagine a scenario where that home allows for access off of the side street, which is Cotopaxi rounding the corner here. And you can see those lines coming off the back of the garage, um, which could be the, a new curb cut and, um, a deep, an attached garage at the side of the home. If when we get to the design of the home, we can have the garage and access off of the alley, we will design it that way. But the lot, um, does allow for access off of Cotopaxi. So we wanted to show you this scenario, um, because, you know, it might have the greatest impact on the conversation. If you go to the next slide, um, we have other information about modifications to the middle of the block. If you're interested in seeing those, there's a handful of slides in which I can share the previous plan orientation um, and where we ended up today. But I will hold on that unless you have questions about that are interested in hearing about that plat amendment. And although it's not part of the review tonight, um, it does tell a little bit of the story about how we got to where we were when the previous architect and planner applied for entitlement and where we are today and why we're asking for these modifications. So should you have any questions, we have a handful of slides here that can show and compare, um, where we were and show you how we got to where we are. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the applicant, anyone? Anybody interested in seeing? I mean, I think if something comes up, we may want to see some further, but I think
We're good for this, I mean.
I think we're just making a decision on this, on this lot, so I don't think, thank, but thank you for the opportunity.
Perhaps if anybody's interested, he could share those slides with us on email so we could review them later.
Sure. All right, if there's no questions for the applicant, we'll move ahead to public comment. If there's anybody here to speak to this this evening? Anybody online?
Nope.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll close the public, um, input and move to commissioner discussion.
The reason I asked that question was, uh, from my perspective, uh, it's nice to avoid curb cuts for traffic safety and, you know, people backing in and out. But gap and indicated that, you know, there's a good chance there be able to connect through the alley there, but not knowing the final design, it's certainly in their purview to do either.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate the effort. I would, I would too, would rather have it off the, for my, if it was my place, my development, off the alley. Just for backing out of there, safety reasons. Hopefully speeds are not quite so, so, so fast there.
Not like D Street.
But, uh, yeah, I appreciate the effort on that as well. Any other questions?
Pretty consistent with what's being built there.
Okay.
All right, then, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, uh, move to approve the 137 Cotopaxi Lane Limited Impact Review Application to construct multiple principal structures as it meets the review standards for such.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the 137 Cotopaxi Lane Limited Impact Review in a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote.
Filet?
Yes.
Bomer?
Yes.
Derbingson?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Crevel?
Yes.
Dockery?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Leighton?
I don't think, uh, yes, but I don't think I'm voting on it.
He's got the next one.
Oh, right, right, okay.
All right.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thanks for the presentation. Okay. Moving on. To Salida Montessori Public School, location and extent review, which I don't think we've ever done.
Nope.
It's a different one for sure. Um, I did try to outline kind of exactly what we can and can't do in tonight's, um, planning commission meeting, noting that it's a little bit different than a normal impact, limited impact review. So if we go to the first slide, please, thank you. So this is an application for a public charter school falling under the location and extent review. Um, it's a unique process governed primarily by state statutes specifically for public facilities such as public schools. Um, the Colorado revised statute specifies that the planning commission may make a decision to approve the application or provide comments to the applicant. If the planning commission is not satisfied with the responses to those comments, uh, you may request a hearing before the Board of Education. And there's a little bit more that goes into that, but it's kind of the, the second part of the process. Um, the state statutes do not explicitly stipulate the review process, and so we're going to be utilizing the limited impact review process per Table 16D in the Land Use Code, um, which says that public schools in this, um, zone district shall be reviewed by limited impact review. So that's why we're having this public hearing tonight. So the applicant RTA Architects is representing Salida Montessori Charter Schools. The proposed school is located at 1108 J Street, as shown here, and contains about an acre and a half. Uh, the property is located within the manufactured housing district, residential district, and is adjacent to R4 similar districts as well as R2, which is, um, medium density residential. The purpose of R4 Zone District in the code does include provision for supporting land uses such as schools. Next slide, please. Um, so a little bit about the review standards. Um, staff has, could we go to the next slide, please? Thanks. Uh, the staff has, is it not working? Oh, sorry. You're good. Uh, reviewed some of the standards, and, uh, we do have a couple of comments for, um, some of the ways that we are, uh, maybe working with the code and working with the applicant to bring this to code. So I'll summarize those a little bit for us. Um, first of all, the use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Um, and the, per the applicant's response that they provided, um, or some of the documentation that they provided us, they are, um, they are doing their best to meet all the dimensional standards, um, that are outlined in the code with these few exceptions. The building heights do marginally exceed code maximums, but staff believes that the design is in such a way that the bulk will not really be that perceived. Um, staff has authorized an administrative variance to allow for an attached sidewalk in this area, uh, rather than the typical detached sidewalk, and this will allow for easier circulation. Paved area lot coverage does also exceed code maximums by a little bit. Um, staff is encouraging as much of the vehicle circulation and parking to be provided onsite, so we think that this is, uh, an okay, um, allowance as well. The parking spaces are a little bit shorter in length than the code requirements, and staff has expressed, um, the concerns with the compact nature of the lot with the applicant team already. Um, and then the last thing to note is that pedestrian paths on the site, um, planning staff want those to be clearly identified and of a material that will endure over time. So we're working with the applicant team to kind of figure these things out and make sure that the design is, is going to work for the school board and also for the city. Um, specifically on traffic control, thanks Catherine. Um, the applicant team has provided a narrative for the traffic control and design of the site. Um, in short, the school makes every effort to minimize the impact of student drop off and pickup traffic associated with the school operations. This is accomplished in several ways, including encouraging biking and walking, both for students and staff. Um, maximizing onsite parking and circulation, like we talked about earlier, and staggering drop off and pickup times for, um, different age groups. And then I just included a few images for you guys to take a peek at, um, including the assessor's website. So this is showing the parcel highlighted in blue, um, and then some of the, some photos of the intersections of J Street and 12th. Thank you. So, based on the observations and review standards, findings outlined above, staff does recommend the, uh, planning commission approve the extent and location review for the Salida, um, Montessori Charter School, and I'm welcome to take any questions.
Yeah, a question, do we, this is a procedural question. Do we, sitting as the planning commission, have the right to approve a variance? Or do we have to have a separate meeting as the zoning board to approve a variance?
So in this particular case, it's, it's pretty muddy as far as the, the statutory language, but in general, you should think of this review as the project in general. So if there's something that's outside of the dimensional standards, for instance, it doesn't require a specific or separate, um, approval of that variance. You're really looking at the project in whole. Um, and then you have your options, as Kristen has laid out, um, regarding the project at, you know, on the whole.
But my only concern would be that if there's someone that doesn't want this to happen, and they say, "Well, you didn't follow your normal procedure." It would seem cleaner if we were to follow our normal procedure.
Agreed. Unfortunately, the state language, the statutory language is, uh, sort of trumps all that, if you will, in this case. It's, it's a unique one.
Yeah, I had a question on that applicability of that state statute.
Yeah.
I don't know how we got here, and I'm sure, you know, you were puzzled over that as well. Um, but when I started to look at this, you know, I just looked up public facilities project, right? Which is defined as government-owned and government-operated. And I question whether this charter school is government-owned or government-operated.
So the, uh, the statutory language specifically calls out in, uh, the section cited in Kristen's staff report, um, public charter schools and of which Montessori is. So they're, they're included in that, under that overall umbrella.
Well, thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, there was standing there because I didn't want that to
Yep.
have a negative impact to the applicant.
No, appreciate it.
And then find ourselves in a, going back to our normal course of business for a limited impact review. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, maybe Kristen can answer it. When and if we ever have a new land use code, um, I know that there will be different zoning districts applied. Would, and I know we've talked with other situations, the firehouse, the Crest Academy, and some of the others, that would then be moved into an industrial zone and would
Not industrial.
Institution.
I mean, sorry, institutional.
But the paper did say industrial the other day, and that was unfortunate.
Yeah, so institutional is what I wrote and what I should have said. Thank you very much for the correction. So my question would be, would this then be moved into the, automatically into, being reassigned into the institutional zone? And if so, would then these things that, that are outside of the, um, the normal, like the height, the land coverage, those kinds of things? Would that, how would that differ in the institutional zone if it were applied to what we have now?
I can speak a little bit to that, but I might ask for some help from, um, Bill as well. So the future land use map that we have does include, it, it keeps this lot specifically still R4, so it doesn't change the zone district. Some, some parts of the code do allow for, um, variances to the standard dimensional, the dimensional standards, excuse me, such as height. So like, for example, schools that are in commercial districts are allowed to be up to 50 to 54 feet in height. Since this is not in a commercial zone district, that they don't get that same height, um, adjustment. As far as some of the other changes, lot coverage, parking access, I'm not sure that those are, um, going to be revised in the future land use code.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, Frances, the, uh, there will be an institutional, or is anticipated that there will be an institutional zone district. In this case, given it's owned by the, the charter school, um, it's anticipated that it will be zoned institutional through the zoning conversion map process that we need to do as part of the land use code update approval. So that's, uh, just another one that we need to, we need to mark out on the map to be...
And as such, then, would that 37 feet, then, would be well underneath? That's my point.
Yeah, yeah, because in...
The institutional allowance...
Is up to 54 feet.
Is up to 54 feet. So if, if we were to approve 37 and a half feet, at some point, that will be re-designated, and that would then be way less. Can you speak also to the land use? The, the paved area, how, how that might vary in an institutional?
I'm looking over at Catherine, see if she remembers.
And also parking size, if that's appropriate.
Uh, I think, I think there are greater allotments for parking, assuming that you're going to have public use of those facilities. Um, I can't remember off the top of my head what the percentages are compared to what, you know, any of the other zone districts allow today. Parking would be higher, though.
I meant the size of the spaces. That wouldn't change. They wouldn't be...
You mean the individual spaces? Like the individual parking spaces? Oh, yeah, no, that, that probably isn't just, that's going to stay the same.
Okay.
As it is.
And the land coverage?
For buildings.
Right. Or paved areas.
Like I said, the, the lot coverage for, for parking is probably going to be larger than, um, it'll be comparable to commercial. As far as the lot coverage for buildings, um, I can't recall.
My question is a little simpler, I think.
Oh.
It's, we're, this was, this is proposed to be 25%, and, uh, normally it would be 40%, is that correct, of the paved area? And that they were allowing more, um, lot coverage, as it were, because of the extra parking. So my question would be, is 25% typical for an institutional designation?
Really don't know if I have a typical percentage.
That's a fine answer, thank you.
Well, Ben, and also, as we, I, I don't remember the hearing, but there was another issue where it came up. But if the new little code was in force, well, and the answer back to us was, you can't think about it that way. You have to do this per the current...
Right. But I, but this, to me, is a little different from the actual, I mean, the code, I mean, I, I get your point, and you're right. Except that, um, this is a zoning designation that will be applied. It's just, we don't know when.
The, the other was a change that was going to be applied, we just didn't know when either, so it's, um, another question is, has a traffic study been done or been contemplated?
It is, oh, Kristen, you go.
I don't believe there's been a traffic study. I don't think it's required either.
And those other things, GIF were changes within as...
Yeah, I mean, the thing, the thing is, you know, I, I, and I guess we should ask the applicant this, but, you know, we're going to split times and all this. How many students are going to be there? How many cars are, how many staff members are there? How many cars are we expected to be traveling, you know, dropping off people on J Street? I mean, if it's, if we're splitting, you know...
I think they said...
Drop-off times for 30 students, it's one thing. If it's 3,000 students, it's, which is obviously not, um, it's another thing, but I think it would be important to know how many students can stand.
And I think somewhere in the packet, it said 30% of the teaching staff would be walking or biking.
Right, but how big is the...
That's a good question, so let's find out.
The teaching staff.
Sure. So I do have a little bit of that information. In the original proposal, I believe that 180 students were anticipated for the school, but I think they have about 130, um, committed to, to be in the school upon open. Um, applicant team can maybe speak to that in a little bit, too, if, if I'm incorrect on that piece. Um, and I believe I have been told about 15 staff members as well.
Fifty?
Fifteen. Fifteen staff. And then I think that the staggering drop-off involves three different age groups, um, so I would assume that maybe it's 30, 30, 30% of that, of that 130 number.
Yeah, good.
I had a question on the, on the parking. Of course, the basis for the parking might be important, and you just stated, you know, so many staff members versus pick-up and drop-off. But, you know, on face value, you know, the staff report indicated the basis for parking in this particular zoning was 60 versus 38 proposed, which, you know, seems like a high number of delta, but it may be, as the applicant says, appropriate for this particular use. I was just curious as to the basis of that 60, uh, number.
I believe the code says that it's one per staff member, and then also one per every four students enrolled. But our, our code is just for schools in general, so that encompasses like high schools, where the students are driving.
Where they're driving.
This Montessori school is really younger kids.
Yes.
Non-driving age.
Non-driving, for sure.
Yeah, so the comparison, you know, compare and contrast that, you know, to land on that 38 number may be an important assessment in the future. Thank you.
Of course.
And I'd like to just make a point of clarification on what GIF and I were talking about, that this particular thing, when we're talking about the, the institutional zoning being applied, is different in my mind from changes that are happening within a zoning district, which is what we were talking about before. You know, um, density and that kind of thing. This is a zone, this would be a zoning district applied to this particular parcel, not changes within the zoning district. Like if we were making, of course, we are kind of making, would be kind of making changes within the R4, but it seems different to me, that's all.
Any other questions for staff? I think we're still, questions for staff? Is the applicant here to address any of the questions we had or make a presentation?
Would you guys like to speak at all, make any type of presentation? Okay.
Does anybody have questions directly for the applicant?
I guess, is, this school is going to replace the school at St. Joseph's and the school, those two?
Could we have one of you just step up to the mic, just so we have that response?
So we just have it on record?
Yeah, on YouTube. Thank you. Whoever's got the best hair, right?
Yes.
Perfect.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, sorry. My name's Courtney Landry, I'm the head of school at Salida Montessori Charter School.
Okay.
Yes.
And were the, the numbers on students that Kristin mentioned correct?
No. No, those numbers aren't actually correct. We probably have about 30 staff members, and so I think at least 30% already ride their bikes to school or walk, and that's even further away from their homes than this location would be. So I feel pretty confident with that. And then with our staff, we probably, I mean, our students, um, we currently have 155 K8 students, and then another 40-ish preschool kids total. And so when we stagger times, I can clarify that as well. Our preschool kids, so that is toddlers, we start at one and walking, so the one-year-olds through the kindergarteners, um, they come a little, they have like a longer period of drop-off, um, and they get out probably about 20 minutes before the older kids, the first through eighth grade students.
Regarding parking and, um, stu-, you know, since students aren't driving, how many parking spaces do you currently need for students at the school during the day? For parents of students?
Typically, I mean, we never have more than a couple parents during the day there at any given time, other than pick-up and drop-off. So I would say at most four or five parents would be there during the day.
Do you have, like, school play or something like that, where you might have hundreds of parents?
We have three whole school events, uh, on our schedule every year, so those are the only time when all the families are expected. One of them, we usually do at a park, so I don't know if it would be at the new location or not. And the other two, I would say we typically get about 50% participation, so it's rare when you get 100% participation in an event.
Could you, looking at the diagram here, could you, um, give me a little more detail on the pick-up and drop-off with the sidewalk and, and where that, and maybe somebody can point? Yeah, thank you. Or, yeah.
So you, you can't see the site in its entirety in this image, but we are really diligent in balancing the amount of hard surface parking. I guess my name's Erica Everett, I'm with RTA. Hi. And the outdoor play piece, because for Montessori, these kids are outside far more than they are inside, and so in the rear of the site, we have some really great outdoor spaces for outdoor education. So finding that balance between maximizing parking, we also have pre-K that have, uh, place-based area requirements, which is what you see on the plan south of the building. That was defined by early childhood needs. And then on the west side, we have a lot of outdoor, um, natural play elements. So, um, our frontage is very limited on J Street. Perhaps there is a parent that could pull up to that attached sidewalk, maybe the middle school kids, their parents are comfortable with doing that kiss-and-go. Um, we have a continuous walkway that connects you on J Street to this plan south of the site, and then all the way to the front door.
As you're talking, so we're, we're really clear on where that is and how that works?
So this would be like the kiss-and-go, drop-off point, and then there's going to be, uh...
A continuous walkway, yeah. And, and what we're proposing, there's a bunch of really old mature trees along that property line that we're doing our best efforts to preserve and incorporate into the play areas. So we have a stabilized crusher finds, which is often used in like the Aspen mountain areas where that are used to getting a lot of snow, can be plowed, can be maintained, but is porous enough to give those trees a chance at survival, uh, when we're trying to incorporate as much parking into that area as possible. So, uh, we are also proposing, which, which I don't think was mentioned, J Street, or sorry, 12th Street just received continuous detached sidewalks with ADA curb cuts along it, so we're proposing an additional sidewalk, or sorry, crosswalk across J Street to, um, a private residence, and then from that corner directly north to our site, just to increase the, the safe route to school pathway for our students. And I think we were requested to have 180 bike racks, because a lot of students walk and bike, um, but, so we are maximizing that on our site as well. So we see a lot of kids coming from that direction.
And some parents will be pulling in, pulling around, and exiting.
Yeah, so one-way traffic, um, on that north side, which is also our fire access lane. So just trying to keep as much of that traffic isolated to one intersection on the site, one curb cut, and then maintaining as much as we can for pedestrian access on the plan south corner.
Any other questions? Thank you. We may have you back up in a bit if we come up with something.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, I think we can move on to public input for this. Are there people here to speak to this?
Do you have a couple of questions?
Uh, if you'll come on up and give us your name, and then the way it works is you can ask, you'll ask us questions, this isn't the time to ask questions of the applicant.
Ask you, but not...
And then we can try to address them.
Okay. My name's Mike Critchley, uh, we live on Chpita Trail, which is to the north of, of the property in question, and we're kind of in the middle of the, uh, of the property. I have a question about, there was a variance request for height. How much are we talking about slight variance? Is that 10 yards, 5 yards?
It's 2 and 1/2 feet over height, and it's only at the ridge line. They are proposing a sloped roof, so it's a very small portion of the building, which is over height.
Okay. Parking spaces was covered. The other thing, uh, we are probably going to be a little lower elevation. What are the provisions for drainage on this particular property?
We don't, I mean, I'm sure that they will have a drainage plan, that they will need to, um, adhere to, um, but we, that's not part of our, part of our...
When, when will we know about that?
So, the, the drainage will be, um, reviewed generally at the, at time of building permit, even through the state fire marshal office. There have been communications between the engineers on the project and city engineers regarding the necessary drainage within the parking lot. The area in the middle of the parking lot, and the applicant may be able to speak to this, Erica, do you, do you want to speak a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah, come on up. If you, if you'd like to speak, please come to the, to the mic.
So there is no, in, there's no storm drainage system in Salida, but we've had a geotech report, and the percolation rates of water on this site is very high. So, um, there is going to be a small amount of retaining, preserving that fence line that exists on the north. Our retaining wall will be a few feet from that, and I believe it's only like a foot to 18 inches of change, and we are, um...
So, this here is, is a high point, and the water will shed here into a rain garden for natural infiltration.
So this will be the, the high piece of the property. Water will shed there.
And then, that'll be, so we're dividing it in half. Half of that will come in here into the parking lot and be infiltrated through this rainwater infiltration area, and then also out here in the playing field area.
So this part of it will drain this?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you do be building up the elevation here?
No, and we're, we're pretty much holding elevation, it's pretty much...
Can we go back to the microphone, please? Because no one on YouTube can hear what you're saying.
Can I just hold this thing?
Yeah, it would be nice.
Then I can't speak when I hold microphones. No, so, um, they, we're, the site is relatively flat, so we are going to be building down into strategic areas for onsite infiltration.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the next step?
And we have submitted, I was going to say, we, we have submitted our drain, our full, uh, engineering drainage report, and we have received some comments and feedback, but that's happening simultaneously. That final sign-off will be done during building permit process.
Where can we see the drainage, uh, presentation portion of this?
I do not believe there'll be a presentation.
Or at least get the information about the drainage?
I don't mind sharing if that's...
I think that, you could go to staff and...
Okay. Thank you very much.
We could pass it along.
Thank you.
Either Kristin, who is, uh, doing this project, or Bill, probably would be the two you'd want to talk to.
Okay, Chris?
Greetings. Chris Falier here, how are you guys doing? So forgive me, I don't know the protocol, I don't know if I can do this or not, but I'm going to do it anyway. How many of you folks have windows out your bedroom? Show of hands. Anybody for the record?
Yes, yes.
Most everybody has one?
Tall windows.
I've reviewed the plan. Looks to me like a lot of these windows on 519 Chpita Park, for instance, are going to be blocked from the sunshine for the majority of the year, especially with the variance. Done a little azimuth study for the sunshine. I think that's my primary concern, um, but, you know, look, we're, we're trying to balance something here, right? Education versus the human toll. There's certainly going to be a human toll here. The majority at Chpita Park, I could be wrong here, but I don't think I am, retirees, right? In the twilight of their life. There's going to be a human toll. And I guess my suggestion is here, let's just take a really close look at the human toll. Think for a moment that every one of your windows were going to be blocked by this project. Would you vote for it? I'll leave you with that.
All right, thank you. Anyone online? Oh. It's right here, and we can write it down.
Could you spell your last name? V.A.S.?
B.A.S.
V.A.S.
C.U.E. Um, I live at 1048 J Street, I also own 1106 J Street, um, which is a... I live at 1048 J Street, and I also own 1106 J Street, which is directly adjacent to the property. I just want to say, I know that the Montessori School has been working on this for a long time, and I fully support more schools in town. I think that it's one of the most beautiful things we have about this community, and a new school is just going to be a great thing. So I just want to preface with that. And my comments are not intended to find fault with the application. I really just have more questions about the traffic control plan. Being right at Chpita Trail and J Street, we see a lot of traffic. Walkers and bikers. Kids from the middle school and the high school come down 11th Street, they cross J Street, they go to Chpita Trail, and they go to the soccer fields. The Montessori School, the early childhood Montessori School is currently on 11th Street, and there's a lot of traffic there, too. We see kids walking across J Street carrying a ribbon to go to Chpita Trail and walk out to, you know, the bike path and whatnot. But it's really concerning because the amount of car traffic coming up and down J Street is pretty substantial. I'm very interested in a traffic control study. I'm very interested and concerned, actually, for the additional amount of kids riding their bikes and walking to and from the school. J Street itself is a corridor between Centennial Park and Longfellow Elementary. We're going to put another school right in the middle of that corridor. I think the city really needs to think about what we're doing for pedestrian traffic on J Street itself. Either a bike lane or more continuous sidewalks. My house has a sidewalk. It was subdivided six years ago, and there was a piece of sidewalk added when the subdivision went through. I think it was probably part of what the planning commission or, you know, the building code required. But it's discontinuous, and so kids have no place to walk on J Street that's safe and separated from vehicular traffic. And so really, that's my concern. We have a terrible drainage problem on J Street as it is. Not to amplify that concern too much, but, you know, my driveway erodes every time there's, every time there's a rainstorm. And I just keep going down the street with my wheelbarrow and put dirt in it, and I just tell people that I'm getting my driveway back, and I go and put it in my driveway again. So those two things are my concern. 225 total is what I came up with, with 155 students plus 30 staff plus 40 preschoolers. That's 225 individuals using this property. And I would love to see it happen. I think education is amazing. I have a young kid, too. But please, please look at keeping pedestrians safe on J Street before you, before you go too much further with approving this. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone online?
We do. Felicia, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move to commissioner discussion. Who wants to start?
Well, to that last Mr. Basque's comments, how much leeway do we have as the commission in this to recommend continuous sidewalks and/or bike lanes? Is that, is that something we can do as part of this limited impact review?
Not It's not something that can be conditioned. However, there's, you can certainly make recommendations to the applicant here. I mean, you're, basically, your choices, again, are to prove it as is, approve it with recommendations, or to request a hearing with their school board. So recommendations are certainly an option.
So we could recommend a traffic study. We could recommend continuous sidewalks. We could recommend a bike path, or all of, or some of the above.
You could make those recommendations, yes.
And, but the sidewalks wouldn't be the responsibility of the school. It'd be the responsibility of the city.
Right.
As would bike paths.
Right.
As would bike paths, yes.
That was a good question.
We couldn't put that on the applicant.
Right.
I mean, you can recommend it, right? Doesn't mean that they'd have to follow those recommendations, but you could certainly recommend it. I will say, I've had extensive conversations with Public Works about this street and the plans for it. It's not anticipated that this, that J Street will receive additional treatments that are city-initiated for approximately minimum five to seven years, because it's already planned out for other locations ahead of that, unless something changes, prioritization schedules change.
But this is a new use, which may in fact change that priority basis, given the extent to which the changes are and the nature of biking, increased biking and walking in that area. So I, I think pointing in that direction for, to assess that with a further discussion, you know, with Public Works Department.
Yeah, I think, I also think it doesn't have to be a lengthy or expensive project if we're talking about some stripes.
Bike lanes.
And sidewalks.
Sidewalk extensions, it doesn't, you know, in the general vicinity, but
But I guess I agree. There's nothing like a little public pressure to change priorities, right?
That's right.
I mean, I know they have a list out there, but that's what public input is for, is change lists.
Right.
Do we have any, I'm just thinking about the, Chpita, is that how we say it?
Trail.
Trail. There is no trail connection further down J Street, right? You have to go all the way to Holman and around.
Right. Or the other way, over to
There's a couple of different connections.
Seventh Street and over to the trail.
To the fields, to the soccer field. Yeah, I'm talking about trail connections, because Angel View's a dead end, there's nothing
Well, there's, there's actually a trail connection right there. It's the Striker Trail in the green.
Right. Nothing at the other end, is what I'm saying.
Nope, you'd have to the north, well, actually off of Chpita. So Chpita connects to that Striker Trail. And then the next one up is at Seventh Street.
At the circle or the bubble.
I guess I'm just thinking, traffic coming down Chpita now, if it wants to get to the, if it's on foot or bike and doesn't want to get on Holman, that's really, I guess you could go down Seventh to get on
J.
Spur Trail. You could go down Chpita to get on Spur Trail.
Well, doesn't that trail by the soccer fields go directly into the bike path?
Yes.
And then the bike path down to Seventh? I do that all the time. So, and I see kids all the time biking back and forth in that area. So really, what we're talking about is J Street is any congestion or safety mechanisms that could be installed on J Street so that kids that are coming that way to J or from the connection on 12th Street where they have the pedestrian crossing over to that school, having a sidewalk connection there. And I think we can make a recommendation on that.
It's so, unfortunately, there is no way that you can get to the back of this lot because you're landlocked because of all the neighbors. So if someone were coming off the bike trail, they would have to go onto Angel View to 13th to J to
That's fine.
Yeah. And to my understanding, actually, the Montessori School has reached out to the landowners there to make possible connection over to the Striker Trail, and they've been rejected in their requests.
Okay. That would have been a nice solution.
Yeah, it would have.
Unless you live in Chpita Trail.
Right.
Well, there's a corner of the lot, 1108, that it practically sits on that trail. So, you know, that, if that had been, if they had been allowed to put a trail along the side of their property that connected at that corner with that, I don't know that it would have been onerous for the Chpita
Well, it's for them to decide.
Yeah, exactly.
Obviously, so
Exactly. Anyway, all right.
So is the issue primarily with foot traffic and bicycles, or is it additionally just road traffic?
Road traffic, bicycles, foot traffic, I think all of the above.
I think the issue that was brought up pertains to increased bike traffic with the existing volume of vehicular traffic. I mean, there'll be increased vehicular traffic as well, but
Yes.
That is one of the concerns, which, I mean, kids come up F Street.
Kids are all over the place.
Mr. Chairman, mind if I ask a couple of questions of the applicant?
Absolutely.
First of all, I understand that you're all considering staggering the start times for the younger kids. Have you considered any addition, additional staggerings for like, say, the middle school graders? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, go up there.
Courtney Landry again. So it's harder to stagger some of the older kids because they participate in sports with the middle school. So I have to get them out of school on time to get them to the middle school. Now they're going to be further away, so I can't really stagger those times. I could maybe stagger the first through third graders and have them come in at a little bit of a different time. We could look at that, certainly. But that would be the only chunk that I could probably move.
And then the other question I had is, it got me thinking when you all were talking about the events, you know, and those times where there would be a lot of vehicles at the same time and potentially even pickup and drop off. Have you spoken with any of the neighboring properties that may have some additional parking space? The one property that does come to mind is the church on the corner of I and 12th, I believe.
Yes.
They're, they've got a, they have a parking area that I assume does not get much use during the times of school use. I'm not sure, maybe you've reached out to them?
If we have, I don't know about that. I don't think so, at this point.
Just a thought there.
Yeah, that would be a good option. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a good thought.
Okay. What else have comments, concerns, motions?
I'm ready for a motion, you guys.
Do you want to include something about, I don't know, we're going to recommend, like, we all go to city council and
No, no. Well, this is a limited impact review, so it doesn't go to city council. But I would like to make a motion to approve the Salida Montessori Charter School with a recommendation that there is a traffic study done by the applicant or the city to assess the possibility for continuous sidewalks, bike lanes, and additional off-street, off-site parking possibilities.
I would leave the off-site parking out of it, because
Yeah, didn't we say that the park gets overparked already? 60 spots?
No, 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 I'm saying additional off-site, like the church.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, but that, I think
I'm just saying to assess the possibilities. That's all that my motion says. Traffic study to assess those, the possibility
Not to obtain.
Right.
Need to obtain.
Assess to, for continuous sidewalks, bike lanes, and any off-site parking that may be available. And we'll leave that in the hands of the, in my view, in the hands of the school district and the city to work out those details.
The Public Works had no comments on this at this point, right?
Right.
Correct.
So my question is, before we vote on that, you're saying continuous sidewalks and bike lanes, just in front of their property?
Well, that would be part of this, that would be part of what the traffic study would assess, in my view.
Because that wouldn't really help, that's
Well, and just to be clear, they are proposing attached sidewalks right in front of the property.
Right, in front of their property.
But what the discussion was To go to and from the property, and that's why if there is a traffic study to assess that, then assess the needs, maybe we'll add that to a traffic study to assess the needs for continuous sidewalks, bike lanes, and off-site parking availability in and around the school site to allow kids to come and go as safely as possible. I don't know if anybody else likes that motion or not. It would not have been a second.
I mean, I like the recommendation for the city to do the traffic. I mean, it seems like the, the need, the need is clearly there. This is a corridor which is already used and will be used more, but it's, like, I think the sticky question is, this, this application brings up that issue, but it's to me, it's beyond the scope of
Yeah, no
The application for
I don't think it's on the school during that study.
So before we, pardon me?
I don't think it should be on the school.
Right, so before we have, before we have a second on the motion, I'd like to make an amendment to that, to say that the city would provide a traffic study to assess the continuous sidewalks and bike lanes.
Because it's, it's not just this school.
I think we can direct the city to do anything.
Well, we're recommending it. That's all we can do. We can't make them do it, but if we recommend it, and we've brought it up, as the neighbors have, as an issue, a health and safety issue for the kids, I don't see why the city can't study that and make, you know, some changes, like Brian said, to the, to expedite the plan for J Street.
Right, I mean, you could recommend the applicant approach the Public Works Department to
Well, I think that's up to the city, and they'll have that conversation.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's
So I'd love to have a second.
Sack ice. I believe I
Let's restate the motion.
All right. I make a motion to approve the Salida Montessori Charter School as it meets the location and extent review standards with the added recommendation that the city provide a traffic study to assess the need for continuous sidewalks, bike lanes, and off-street, off-site parking to address the health and safety of the pedestrian and vehicular traffic coming and going from the school. How is that?
The only thing I would change would be to say continuous bike lanes and sidewalks for the length of J Street.
I will take that as a, as a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Can we do that without having to vote twice?
I think so. Do you guys agree with that?
All right. All right. Motioned and seconded.
Do we have a second?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I second. Okay, Giff second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Question, Judy, are you good?
Leighton?
Yes.
Dockery?
Yes.
Crevel?
Yes.
Holby?
Yes.
Deringson?
Yes.
Homer?
Yes.
Olley?
Yes.
Motion passes, it's a second and a third.
All right, congratulations.
Looking forward to
Thanks, guys, for all the help on the motion. Together, we did it.
Um, all right.
All right.
Any updates?
Uh, nothing too much. You probably all saw the email from Nina regarding the code amendment on participation of commissions. If you have not had a chance to read that, please
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, or staff, I can't quite hear what you're saying, so
We'll just give these together and clear out.
Yeah, they've had a chance to. Bye.
Bye, thanks.
Okay, Bill, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
I did not see that. When was that sent?
I didn't see it either.
I believe Nina sent it on Friday. It was either Thursday or Friday, because I was out of town for a conference. Check your email. If you did not get one, feel free to email us back, and we'll forward on that language that she put together. It's very brief, so take two seconds to read it, and feel free to email her back with your thoughts on that. The plan, her plan is to bring it to the next city council meeting for reading. So the sooner that you can get that back to her, the better.
And, and she did make, want to make sure everybody, if you're responding, responding to her only?
Yes, correct, thank you. Just, just to Nina.
And if we, I did have a question on it. The, the schedule is, does that include planning commission meetings and work sessions? Or is it just
Specific to regular meetings, just a meeting such as this evening, not work sessions that we do, not work sessions with council, but just regular meetings, of which we have one scheduled per month, generally.
And Bill, what happens to a work session that gets, gets
Co-opted.
Co-opted into a meeting? Because that wasn't addressed on her thing. And I'm fine with what she wrote, but I do think if, if it's not going to be addressed, it's going to count any regular meeting.
I would address, I would email her your thoughts and any questions to her on that one, because I can't speak for her.
Right. I mean, we haven't, we don't, typically, we've had kind of a cluster lately because of the staffing shortages and everything. So we haven't, in the years that we've been on here, Greg and Giff, we haven't had that many work sessions many work sessions that have turned into regular meetings, and it just occasionally on a, and it also didn't address how many, if there is a, is an issue with remote attendance. I know council has remote attendance policy. They can take so many remotely. So, I mean, I'm fine with what she wrote, but we just need to think about these other things and give her feedback.
Other than that, we, yeah, we're just plowing through. We've got still land use applications coming in, lots of inquiries still. Building side of things have definitely slowed down as the years gone on, and I think with the anticipation of interest rates coming down, we've pretty much, that pretty much put a, put a stop on anything new until that actually happens, as people will look to take advantage of that. We're kind of anticipating that we'll see a spike in construction correlating with those interest rates coming down or soon thereafter. So we got to get prepared for that. But obviously, Kristen and Carolyn have been taking on a number of land use applications and inquiries and everything else as of late, which hopefully will allow Catherine, myself, to focus on, among other things, obviously, the land use code update. We are right now waiting for Clarion to return the latest draft of the, or the first full draft of the consolidated code, which we're hoping for the next couple of weeks. We're hoping to get it earlier, but they've lost some staff and been focused on some other projects, so we're kind of at their mercy right now. But we did build it into the budget to be able to pay them at least a portion of the next year and hopefully get this done between now and then, so...
Good. Can you give us any kind of an update on some of the projects that we have approved, like the flower mill, for example, where it stands, the Slida crossings, where it stands?
Yeah.
505 Oak Street, where it stands? I see dirt being moved around.
I'll give you, I'll give you a quick one, because we're going to be doing that for city council here in about a month at a work session, but Slida crossings, they've got a, they're building permits in for the mixed-use buildings, and Catherine's been getting some inquiries as of late, which would lead us to believe that they're planning on starting things up here sometime soon again. Do you have anything else to add to that?
No.
Other than some of the silly questions we get about? The flower mill, there've been some negotiations going on between the owner and city council, which is going to be coming to a future council meeting, so keep your eyes peeled. He's chomping at the bit to get going with that, but as you can imagine, the costs have been much more than he anticipated, given the amount of affordable housing that is planned for that. You mentioned one other, I'm trying to think.
505 Oak?
505, that one's moving forward.
Looks like it.
Yeah, that, they're doing the dance right now with the 291 construction, fire station, everything else, but that one is, is moving forward. I don't know if we have any building permits in just yet, but I think they're due in pretty soon on that one. Obviously, a whole bunch of construction on 291 with the, with the fire station. Then there is, let's see, some, some plans in the works, just so you all know, if you didn't catch the council work session last week for a roundabout at 291 and Mesa Lane, a small three-legged roundabout there that's been identified as a potential future high-risk area, if you will, and so they're getting ahead of that since there's funding available through grants since CDOT.
Is there ever by the hospital?
Yeah.
Down by Grant Street?
Um...
Where the road goes up?
It's, Mesa Lane comes off of the Mesa down to the bottom there, yeah.
You can wait for a while there.
Yep. Yep.
That'd be great. You know, there's a roundabout at 291 and 50?
Yep. That's also on CDOT's agenda. I just was at the TPR, or heard the TPR meeting last week, and that one's planned for 2026 as well. So you'll be seeing still a lot more construction here in the next couple of years.
They get it right the first time.
Yeah, right. Sorry, what was that?
Roundabout is 2026?
Yeah, probably both of them.
50?
The one at Mesa Lane will be there first, but it's possible that construction may begin either at the same time or just after on the one at 291 and Highway 50.
That's great.
Yeah. Can be some big changes.
Be sandwiched by road construction on all sides of Slida.
Yeah, right.
Getting out of town is going to be fun.
Don't go.
You want the growth to slow down a little bit, right? Like, this helps keep it...
All not to screw up the traffic islands.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, it's probably a blessing in disguise that that happened, because everybody's eyes are going to be that much wider looking at stuff.
Right.
So, yeah.
And our next meeting is a work session in September?
Yes. We need to get back to you on that, whether or not that's, that's going to happen, so we'll, we'll follow up here in the next couple of days to verify.
Because we did have some, some items to discuss on the inclusionary housing on that.
Yep, there's...